This conference will now be recorded.
All right, good evening, welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of May 3rd, 2021. How do you order, please?
Councilman Huss, here. Mayor Potam Johnson, here. Councilman Mitchell?
Here.
Councilman Noak?
Here.
And Mayor Walagora?
Here.
Please, please write that. The agenda is to apply United States America to the Republic for citizens on a nation indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. For the agenda? I believe we have the agenda.
Councilwoman Huss?
Yes.
Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noak?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Okay.
These are just the notifications to the agenda this evening. Approval of the minutes for regular session of April 19th, 2021, and special sessions of April 20th and April 29th, 2021. Choose your changes.
You have to correct.
That's in the consent agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Because that was a couple meetings. Citizens here before council on agenda and non agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address their concerns. So stay on time during tonight's meeting if there are a lot of address council. We will start with our audience. If anyone is here that would like to please come to the podium and state your names and address for our records, and then I'll move to the virtual. Yeah. Are you on the agenda later? Are you that engraved?
Yes, are we, should we don't come up now?
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're on the agenda, so. Thank you. Anyone else? Sure. Nobody else? That's all.
Hello, my name is Kevin Getcher. I live at 390 South Lawn, and my presentation or appeal, whoever, is concerning the township fire department and city fire department. And my first thing or first point is to thank those four that voted to not proceed with the merger. It was an issue right from the get-go. I can go into that more. And my appeal is that maybe after some information and some insight, you might reconsider or discontinue the approach of keeping the discussions open, at least as they are to this point. I think my first issue started right from the get-go. And still to this day, the township's own fire chief is not involved in the overall general outlook for the future of the fire department, whether that's to reinvent something, or start something over, or turn it over under the offices of the city fire department. I think what was missing, and something that's come up more and more recent, is the perspective that the fire department at the township was somehow inadequate, couldn't meet certain responses. Certain public officials are making it sound like, oh, it's all great now. It must be the path for the future. The only thing that I've, or one of the things that I've thought made any sense was maybe some cost savings. But my foremost concern right from the get-go was that if you're a form of government, your main core criteria for your citizens is public safety, police and fire. The rest of it is a sidebar in a sense. If you're not keeping the people safe from criminals, or people going 100 miles an hour through your residential neighborhood, that's not going to work for people. The same thing happens with the fire department. Probably back in Ben Franklin's time, he organized the first paid fire department. People were going, you know, isn't it a shame that that house burned down? We should have some people available that can go put that house fire out, building fire out, and save the people who, if we had just some contingent of personnel, could go save the people that died senselessly in that fire. My opinion about the finances is that right from the get-go, there was never any information. There was no proclamation by the township board or other officials going, wow, this thing's in desperate, we're in dire straits. We've got to do something to save money. Sort of back to my core principle about municipal governments, taking care of their citizens, is that I think you look past nickels and dimes when it comes to public safety. You want to assure your citizens that we are going to take care of you at these core services. The other thing I'd leave you, just so I don't run out of time, is that I think part of this whole picture is a concern not only for township citizens, and I thought this right from the get-go. If you take any number of scenario-based responses or assessments, you're going to run into a problem where, or run into an issue where, oh, wait, holy crap, we're not doing what we're supposed to do. If you have Chief Forebush has indicated you guys have up to six ambulances available for 911 and other needs. Those aren't all on the road at one time, but they can be. So there's been some things happening recently where they're getting people to call back, guys that are off duty. Well, that's only available after a certain time. If you have people going on, going to different parts of the county, doing the 911 business, and then you get a house fire, you have limited people available at the moment's notice. That's something I thought that the township was taking care of. Now granted, the comparison, this is so easy for me. There are so many places I can go. But the last thing, my point was that if you get into a spot where we don't have enough personnel to make an initial fire attack, get to the person that needs CPR, where you can make a difference. This is why this path for the township is bad. And my appeal to you before I conclude is that this is not good for the township. This is not good for the city. Okay.
Anyone out here in the building for us? Anyone indicate on the, anyone in the chat? No one in the chat? Next up is a consent agenda. A is built to be allowed in the amount of 152,732 hours and 46 cents. B is a council reappointment of Ed Rutherford to the rubber advisory committee for a three-year term, starting May 1st, 2024. C is to correct the February 17th, 2021 special session minutes to change the word regular to special in the first sentence. And D is Spirit of the Blues request for a noise variance from 10:00 PM to 12:00 AM on June 19th, 2021, and street closure from 8:00 PM on June 18th, 2021, to 12:00 PM on June 20th. I believe we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noak?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora? And Councilwoman Huss?
Yes.
Would she agree?
As a proclamation, this is Older Americans Month. Whereas the city of Alpena, Michigan, includes a growing number of older Americans who have built resilience and strength over their lives through successes and difficulties. And whereas the city of Alpena benefits when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are included and encouraged to share their successes and stories of resilience. And whereas the city of Alpena recognizes our need to nurture ourselves, reinforce our strength, and continue to thrive in times of both joy and difficulty. And whereas the city of Alpena can foster communities of strength by creating opportunities to share stories and learn from each other, engaging older adults through education, recreation, and service, and encouraging people of all ages to celebrate connections and resilience. Now therefore, I am Matthew J. Walagora by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Alpena, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Older Americans Month in Alpena, and urge every resident to recognize older adults and the people who support them as essential contributors, give us strength of our community. I don't think that's, we have a guest. Joel? Now we have a report of officers. First up is the 2021 to 2022 preliminary budget.
Thank you. Okay, here we are again. Hard to believe that this is already my fourth budget presentation. Rachel's second, and Rich's last, actually. So congratulations, Rich. I would also like to express my appreciation for all the work that Jennifer Barrett in my office did on this. She's the one that put it all together for us, and that is a huge undertaking. Let's talk some numbers. Yes, love it. Okay, all right, Steve's on the right page already. Okay, so per the charter, I made to present a brief and concise budget summary showing the estimated receipts and expenditures of each fund and a total of all funds, a statement of the estimated financial condition of each city fund reflecting the estimated surplus or deficit in each fund. So this slide is a really good representation and a good summary of all of our funds that we do budget for. So you see the names off to the left there, the first one being the general fund. And as we go across the columns, the first one is the 21 revenues and the 21 expenditures. These are the amended numbers for the current fiscal year. And we are estimating that we are going to have a deficit. Our expenditures are going to be over projected revenues, and that's $107,238. Moving across that is the fiscal year 22 projected revenues of 10.5 million and the projected expenditures of 10.7 million. And we are estimating a deficit of $197,715 for the general fund for fiscal year 22. And that is intentional. And the reason is because we intentionally wanted to use some fund balance. Because if you recall, and I mentioned this last meeting, our unassigned fund balance got up to 33%, which was great coming up of the, well, that was at June 30th of last year, so just a few months into the pandemic, but it set us up to be successful for this year. So we added, I think it was over $580,000 to fund balance for fiscal year 20. So our fund balance policy says that we should have a minimum of 10% and a maximum of 20%. So by using $197,000, we're estimating that we're going to bring down the unassigned fund balance to 27%. So that still leaves us in a really good position. It's still higher than the 20%, but I think, I feel comfortable using some of it, and also it's setting us up for a nice fiscal year, a good position as well. Still moving along in that, the next column over, the fund balance at June 30th of 20 was 3.3 million, and we are estimating the fund balance with that reduction of $197,000, so you end up at 3.2 million. And then our, that's for, I'm sorry, let me go back. At June 30th of 21, we're going to reduce it by the 107, and that's going to take it to 3.2 million. And then we'll reduce it more at $197,000 and take it to the final column, just over 3 million for fiscal year 22. And then you can go down and see all the other funds and how we projected those. Anybody have any questions on that one?
Well, I have some.
Great. Okay, moving to the next one, please. Okay, this one is an estimate of the amount of money proposed to be raised by taxation and the amount to be raised from bond issues, which together with the estimated income from other sources will be necessary to meet the proposed expenditures. So top left is the general fund, and we are estimating to receive almost 4 million in taxation for tax year 21. And then estimated revenue from other sources is 6.5 million. The grand total estimated revenue for the general fund is 10.5 million, and our estimated general fund expenditures, as I mentioned on the previous slide, is 10.7 million, which is a reduction from fund balance of $197,715. Moving down to the brownfield capital projects, this is tax capture that we receive on the brownfields. So Dean Arbor is done, and that one, that's why there's a zero in that column. We are expecting to receive $69,642 from taxation on the brownfield projects, $50,000 from other sources. Total revenue is $119,642, and expenditures are the same, so it's a balanced budget. Top right column is the authority for brownfield redevelopment, and this also pertains to Dean Arbor, so that was all zeros. The next one down is the downtown development authority, number two. This is also tax capture money. We are estimating we're going to receive $146,501 and 15,400 from other sources, which totals $161,901 in anticipated revenue and $159,820 in expenditures, and we will add $2,819 to fund balance. The next one down is the other DEA fund, number five. This is where the tax levy revenue goes to, and we are estimating to receive $22,000 and $10,410 from other sources for total revenue of $32,410, and expenditures of the same amount, so we will either reduce the fund balance or add to. Any questions on that one? Next screen, please. This one is detailed estimates of, or detailed statements of estimates for all anticipated income of the city from sources other than current taxes and borrowing, which was on the previous one, compared with the amounts received by the city from each of the same or similar resources for the last preceding and for the current year. Receipts for the current year shall be computed as the actual receipts to April 1st, plus the estimated receipts for April, May, and June. You better believe I read that about 12 times to figure out what he said. It's important here. But this is, this is the very detailed revenue other than taxation and borrowing. Does anybody have any questions on that, because I'm not going to go through all of them unless you want to talk to us with this.
I've got some questions on some areas, and thanks, Chairman, before council, and just some ideas. You know, a couple of things that I did notice in here, maybe this is the time, but, you know, I noticed that we had a breathing air compressor replacement, budgeted for $60,000, and now that we took that out for a tax reason. And I just wanted to talk to the chief of that, you know, if I recall that one specifically correctly, that piece of equipment was.
Yes. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Noak, the breathing air compressor is extremely important. There's no question about that. However, Rob Edmonds has done an exceptional job in writing assistance to firefighter FEMA grant for that this year, and I'm really hopeful that that will be successful. We have done really well with FEMA grants because of the financial status of the city, folks that were in greater need. But I really thought, think he did a great job writing it, and I think it's safe to wait a little bit longer and see if that grant comes in. If things were flush, yes, I'd love to do that, but I think that's one that we might be able to afford to forego temporarily.
Okay. You know, just if we don't get any grants on that, maybe that is something that we'll look at in the future too, because I do remember that. It's pretty good. The other thing I just noticed in here, I had my number written wrong, is that I thought we had cut the body armor replacement, but it looks like we funded that in the amount of $2,000 versus 22.
Yes, we only cut.
Written down, Canada, I want to make sure we can get that.
We only cut one vest.
Okay. Oh, I tell you, I'm just pretty hurt to make that statement. That's the only question that I got to talk to you.
A couple of things I just thought a little with revenues is we didn't put any of the ARPA money in yet, because we just don't, we watched the webinar this morning hoping to get some more information on it, and they're just, they still don't have it out. But we do have until the end of calendar year 24 to use it. We are expected to get half of the total amount, hopefully this fiscal year, and then the other half will be a year from now, or a year from whenever we get that payment. The other unknown is the agreement, the temporary agreement that we have in place right now with the township for fire services. We didn't, I mean, obviously, we don't know what the outcome of that is going to be, so we just put in an extension of that. Was it for six months? The same amount, $125,000. And then also, we have, on the expenditure side with that department, we have three firefighters that are retiring in July, and the plan right now is to only replace one. And that is to help with the uncertainty of also the long-distance transfers. We're not quite sure what our revenue is going to look like. No, you got anything to add to that?
Yes, long-distance transfers are down at this point due to the presence of mid-Michigan ambulance here in town, and even more so because of COVID. Most COVID patients don't end up transferred. They stay right there at the hospital, and that's the majority of what's, what's coming in these days. So there is a drop in revenue there. The hope is that the township project will move forward. If it does, the revenue from that will balance out enough that we can afford the three positions that we're going to have. But at this time, to be conservative, we're only filling one of them and waiting to see what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on the revenues, the general fund, or any other fund really? Okay, so the next section would be the, Steve, it would be page 35. Okay, you're there. This is a statement of the detailed estimates of all proposed expenditures for each fund, including a statement of all salaries paid to city officials, itemized for each department and activity by objects of expenditure, showing in parallel columns, the expenditures for the preceding year, the appropriation and expenditures for the current year, and the recommendations of the city manager as to the appropriations to be made for the ensuing year, including any, including an appropriation for contingencies, and showing the increases or decreases in the recommended appropriations over the expenditures for the current year. Expenditures for the current year shall be computed as the actual expenditures to April 1st, plus the estimated expenditures for April, May, and June. Woo! So that's what you see here. So same setup as the revenues. Any questions on the expenditures? Very detailed, long section. As part of the expenditures, Steve, if you could go with the 64, please. This is the statement of salaries for city officials for fiscal year. Council members are on calendar year, and we don't have the next calendar year yet, because that order doesn't meet until December of this year to make that determination for the next two years. So this is what it is for now, or through the end of the calendar year 21. We also have city manager, myself, the city attorney, city engineer, police chief, fire chief, and the planning position is currently vacant, and the city building. We did put in 2% on the entire pay scale, and then also there are administrators that are still working their way through the steps. So some look like higher increases than others, me being one of them, but that's because I get a step plus a 2%. And then all other work groups are based on the contracts. Any questions on that? Next page, please. This one is a statement of the bonded and other indebtedness of the city, showing the amount required in the ensuing fiscal year for retirement of principal on the debt, for interest, and for a sinking fund for return bonds if such a fund is required. I really like this one because I like to see each year debt coming off of it. So last year, there was, we also had ambulance remount. We were still paying for the SCBA cylinders. There was the 23 North property, I believe, but that was all paid off in the current fiscal year. So this is what we have left. In the top left is the state revolving loan fund. This amount comes out of the sewer fund. Below that is the SRF, DWR, ineligible expenses, and those are shared equally between sewer and water. White column on the bottom is the drinking water revolving fund. That's the one that's charged to the water fund. Then above that is the building authority, DPW Building. So really, this is the only, for the general fund, this is the only debt the general fund has left. And a little recap on the bottom, can't see it on that screen. So principal debt at the beginning of fiscal year 22 will be 4.4 million. And in fiscal year 21, we paid off $609,432 of debt. That's principal. Any questions on that one? Next page, please. This one's a statement of outstanding delinquent taxes and special assessments which have been levied during the current and preceding fiscal years of the city, and an estimate of the amount thereof which may reasonably be expected to be collected or realized upon during the next fiscal year of the city. So over in the left column, you can see the different tax years that we are still trying to collect on. And for 2015, there's four parcels, but three of, three of those are ones that we are going to strike on the tax rolls. We'll have to take it to court. And that is in the to be stricken column, $474.21. The other parcel is one that is making payments, and that's going to be paid off in the next fiscal year. In 2016, there's nine parcels. There is one, two, I think that, no, there's one that I expect to collect next fiscal year, and then another one in, in, after fiscal year 22. There is also a few that will be stricken as well, but those can't be stricken until 2022. We actually, we, there's a note on here that this report was ran April 28th, and since then, we've actually collected on two more. We've collected on a 2019 and then on a 2020. So we do have 70 parcels we're still collecting. Any questions on that one? The highlighted part is what I expect to collect the net. The highlighted part is what I expect to collect the next fiscal year for all entities, and then the next column over is the city's share. Okay, no questions on that one, I got one more. This is the organization funding, I know this question always gets asked over your site, so I didn't click finally. Um, this is when the city puts in its budget to contribute to organizations in the city. We've got the, here at the Maine Society, twenty thousand, um, that has been the same for the last few years. Target Alpena, forty thousand, that's been going up for quite a while, same amount. We put in five thousand for the Thunder Bay Arts Council, which we've been doing for a few years too. The Wildlife Sanctuary, we put in ten thousand for the River Center, so that would go into a restricted fund balance, restricted just for the use of uh, the construction of that building. And then fifteen hundred dollars for a miscellaneous projects during the fiscal year twenty-one, or twenty-two. We also put in eight thousand for Hunt, and twenty thousand is our um, annual contribution to the Park Foundation. Total is a hundred and four thousand five hundred. Oh, and C I P projects, um, you may have seen in the preliminary budget, the actual budget documents. Um, if you go down a little bit, Steve. So we have all the projects on the left side, and the middle column is um, what was approved in the C I P by vote, in the joint commit, uh, joint meeting of the planning commission and the council, and then the right column is what actually made it in. So I did some math and we actually were able to get in ninety-one percent of um, the proposed amount. Questions on anything?
Is this part of the budget available on the website?
Yes.
So, so we put that, and then yeah, and then later we put the final.
So next meeting on May seventeenth will be the bulk hearing on the budget, and then um, the first meeting in June is, is likely when it-
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right. I think we are likely to receive a file.
I will do so, yeah. See you.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walidora? Councilman Hatz?
Yes.
And Mayor Protime Johnson?
Next up is election workers' wages.
The last increase for election workers was approved in two thousand nineteen. I'm requesting an increase of two percent for all positions, which include inspectors, deputies, and chairpersons. Training is paid at a minimum wage, which I put nine eighty-seven, that's what it was supposed to go up to, but um, it's actually still nine sixty-five. Nine dollars and sixty-five cents an hour. So the proposed two thousand twenty-one rates are fifteen dollars twenty-three cents per hour for the chairperson, thirteen twenty-two for the deputy, and eleven dollars fourteen cents for the inspectors. Election days can be very long, lasting fourteen hours for a born. That's probably about what it'll be tomorrow. Um, because they, so setup begins at approximately six AM on election day, polls are open seven AM to eight PM, and reconciliation and tear down lasts until nine or ten. They expect it to be very quick tomorrow, since there's only one thing valid. It's my recommendation to increase election worker wages by two percent, beginning with the May fourth, two thousand twenty-nine election. Um, this is, this is the history of the increases over the years. So every two years is, is often we propose an increase.
Couple of questions, how are you staffed for your elections right now? Are you, are you finding adequate people to be able to run the elections?
We actually have a lot of people apply and work for the November election. So I still have a lot of interest, I haven't received any new ones since, but I, I have a large pool to choose from now, so that's great. But for tomorrow's election, since it's incredibly going to be small, low turnout, um, I've only staffed four workers in each precinct, so that consists of a chairperson, a deputy, an electronic work worker, and another inspector.
And the other thing I have, it's fourteen or more hours, so that is a requirement, that they stay there, the same workers, the entire day, which we know some can work half or anything like that, and that's kind of a-
Um, they can, we usually don't do that. Um, sometimes we get requests for that and we accommodate. Um, they do take, I think it's at least a half hour lunch break. Hopefully. It's either a half hour to an hour. Um, and we have, even with one person going at a time, we still are required to have three workers at the precincts.
Second.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walidora? Councilman Hatz? Yeah. Mayor Protime Johnson? Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
You can there, those communications on the pictures. Granted, some of these cemetery restoration volunteers, Nikki is here to represent them. Good to come up. And bring any guests that would like to-
Sure, I'm going to bring everybody else, so we all have a voice, if you don't mind. My cohorts, Miss Danielle Door and Mr. Mike Phillips. I do have some things for you, so you can move ahead and we'll talk through the following. Understand and reply to all of these questions. Lovely, but for Tina and my family, she's actually so much more. So we'll make it quick here, and she's stepping out, I'll start talking right away. My name is Amanda Fishnitsky, as we said before, and Danielle Door, and Mike Phillips. Um, Brent, Karen, what makes three people want to walk around in the cemetery when you came on? Well, that's Brent, it worked out really well, that um, we began meeting in the cemetery, satisfied that need to be social but safe. Um, we're both, our three of us are gardeners and historians by basically hobby, so we started out by walking around and kind of adding some beautifications and merry-go-round, that kind of thing, some plots that we know, no one really visits anymore, they're um, that kind of thing, just sort of give that cemetery a little perk. You know, if a lot of people were walking around, and hey, let's find that beauty apart as normal. So, we began researching stone restoration as well, because we began to notice where memorials once stood, not only have reclaimed to mark who's existed, on whether erosion and time are all competing to erase the ingredients on these stones, the stories of these citizens helped build our awesome community today. To date, we have revived three stones, you can see in the pictures here, the first one was young Jimmy. Jimmy was a boy who Sam was visiting with a Japanese circus in nineteen twenty-four. He developed meningitis and suddenly passed away here in the United States. His family had erected this beautiful monument, it was one of the most unique in our cemetery. That was the first one that we sought to sort of restore and recreate the life. Next was a Mabel Johnson, happened to be another cemetery loss in the country, Half Berry. She appealed to us because it's a World War One Army nurse. What, what do you mean? And being progressive as we are, we had to figure out who she was, right? And then the next one we did was Charlie Lynch, now he is also a victim, but he is the son of the late Sheriff Charlie Lynch, who was a peace sheriff who was shot in his building line of duty here in the eighteen hundreds. Now he ends his, kind of buried in the same plot, but only young Charlie has a stone. Yeah, so you'll see, that can put through, we have young, we're making a little memorial for Sheriff Lynch to be placed there, and tell him to get a stone to be, or can, we do believe he deserves that recognition. And he's a story of a town, and he helped, and have a bloke named Morgan, huge notorious gangster game from the Ohio area back in the eighteen hundreds. So, I'm going to hand it over to Mike a little bit now, we have got, felt a connection with Sheriff Lynch, but also through creative collections, we are doing our best to locate, research hundred and seventy-three Civil War soldiers that we have located in our Evergreen Cemetery, that's a huge number that we just didn't really realize before. Um, one of the ones that we discovered is Mr. Warren Brown, and thank you to all involved on getting us a few G A R markers for those stones that we're missing, but it's like he has a stone, I also want to pass this around, a little engraving on the, we did. Now, Mr. Brown was in the Michigan First Colored Infantry, so that's also something notorious for this town. So I'm going to pass it over to Mike, he's going to talk a little bit about our biological solution that we use on the stones, and you understand the safety of it, and another really exciting opportunity that's coming up with the council.
Then my name is Mike Phillips, and uh, while researching uh, to, to find a product and, and proper procedures, um, we came across the uh, I, I contacted a professor from U of M, and I asked him, you know, what, what's the proper clean solve and everything? Thankfully, he told us what um, we had already been using. So it's a D two biological solution, and it's used in Arlington, that's why those stones are also white equally, you know, all the way down the lines. And uh, they also use it on the White House. So uh, you know, I was asking Mr. Hentor and Professor Hentor, how, how they view things in the other diet. Anyway, we talked for a half hour before we finally wrapped up and said, uh, would you like me, in my, would you like our class, my interns to come to Alpena and do a workshop? Yeah, so, you know, we got to talking some more, waiting for the cost to bring all the students to Alpena, Michigan, so. Clint, and uh, you know, it's, he's gonna, he's gonna do it free. Um, so we've asked for a signature to allow them to come and work in Evergreen Cemetery. And um, so we're vetting that back and forth between the legal departments and uh, we tentatively, as you can see, we made a, a flyer, I can put our cemetery on it just as a master tool to, you know, to outline what we have planned. So tentatively, we're looking at, what was it, July twenty-fifth, I believe? July tenth, and May twentieth, he's going to come up and do a site evaluation. I was really concerned that he, you know, he came up and we didn't really get a good cross-section of what needed to be done. So I posed, you know, different scenarios, monuments that are in different states of decay, so on and so forth, and and I, I just wanted to make his, his trip up here as useful to us as possible, I mean, it's pretty college class. So I'm really excited about it. Uh, so anyhow, all's kind of in the works there. Uh, that's one of our uh, things on our agenda. Uh, another one is, you know, we would like, I would need a signature from the uh, Sexton or the, you know, the city cemetery head, uh, to allow us to petition the Veterans Administration for a headstone for Mr. Brown. Now, they do that, they can ship it here free as well, but we have to, we have to ask them to do it for us. So I'm asking for that signature, so we can move with that as well. Um, so I, the workshop, and uh, we also um, heard that uh, there were some plans to beautify uh, old restrooms that are in the cemetery. Uh, on the cemetery walking tour, it's mentioned that that was on the agenda at some time. So we're kind of volunteering for that as well. We, we've got a lot on our plate, and uh, we're, you know, we're just picking away at it, as you can see, we've done some things already. And um, I guess we're here to, that's for authorization to uh, maybe take over and do these things. We, we're not asking to be the first for anything that we've done in as far as materials, but in order for us to move on to a hundred and seventy-three Civil War graves, you know, when I'm volunteering for that, I figured out what, thirty people, maybe a lot of telegraphing to go to war, well, I'm thinking, well, came to Alpena after the war, so, yeah. Hundred and forty more uh, sites to visit. And, and we haven't, I haven't by any means found all of the Warren Brown stuff, because it's, it's a rather cumbersome search. And um, there's a couple more missing, so, and when I say missing, you know, it's supposed to be in this section, in that section. Again, we're relying on a lot of information that was passed on, it's not like, and, and we're finding that, we're finding some, we're finding that there's going to be more than a hundred and seventy-three, because we found some that weren't on our list, and they are getting stuff, so somehow, the cemetery, they've done a great job, and they're, they're finding stuff that isn't owned by their people. So, in a nutshell, we'd like you to, to help us out, we'd like you to let us, kind of smooth, basically. I, I hope this happens, we gave you a show that we, we were doing, and uh, I heard certainly in the right spot, we care about our city, and uh, and uh, a lot of these stories that are, you know, getting lost, so, well, again, we're going to restore the stones and um, and bring the stories to a handful, at least the thirty that, you know, left Alpena, and what were they doing when they left Alpena to go to war, and, and how did they change our city when they got there? You know, that's just kind of a, a side thing that we're doing, uh, if we can apply it somewhere, we're certainly going to do it. I would love to, once we have a body of work, we're going to present it to the library, and maybe they can have a a Civil War walking tour as an attendant to what they already have. So, that's about where we are.
That's awesome, um, I've got a couple of questions for you. The, as far as the petition for the marker, you, you're working with staff already?
That's what I was going to say, is, um, basically, we didn't bring anything for authorization here today. The only um, thing that we have done is, you know, we've, we're allowing um, a professor to come in and do the workshop, but um, as far as authorization, there was still some information going back and forth um, from D P W and our cemetery Sexton and, and this group, so if we do need authorization, we will bring anything back to housework this way, because this is our information only right now.
If I may, it's a veteran, the Veterans Administration is requesting the signature, just so, it's, it's more of an invitation. Would you help us? It's, that's all I believe it really is, you know, maybe it is, it was differently about it, but uh, so that's, that's um, where we are with that. Uh, and I'd like to also add that um, Alpena historian and Civil War aficionado Don Juan, who's been helping sort of this. And uh, when I told him what we were doing, he, he got ahold of his buddies in Travis City with the Sons of Union Civil War veterans, and when they heard this Warren Brown story, they were really eager. Warren Brown was a flag bearer, and when I came to the city and asked for a, a flag, that's what I said, you know, it's like, I think that's the least we can do is to get a flag bearer flag, since he didn't have a money, that no one knew he was there. So that's what we did, we got the flag, we got him, and I just picked up the star the other day. So, fuck it, I-
No, that's okay, um, I was kind of curious as to what, what exactly your fund source, your fund sourcing is for all of these projects.
You're looking at-
Well, thank you.
Like I said, we're, we're not looking for reimbursement, we're looking for, to proceed.
Yeah, and that's the whole spirit. Do you have a question perhaps for Bill, or about um, about any legalities as far as it's us allowing a group to, to, I guess, clean someone else's property? Because a headstone isn't necessarily the city's property, or is it, once it's there? Do we have the authority to clean it, or?
Or we have the authority to do maintenance in the cemetery.
And that includes?
Yeah, I guess maybe, I'm not sure. Rich would know how they consider the stones. One chip, I thought the individual plot on their stone. Now, what about the fact that if someone paid for perpetual care, you know, obligated to do so? I know that Jimmy, I can always, Stone, they paid $60 in 1924 for perpetual care. So, you know, I'm just saying, that's a consideration. I know there was one document that Rachel sent me to review that I'm having problems with, but I'm not sure if there's any other documents that you folks have that you, as you say authorization, you would need to see what you're specifically asking us to authorize.
Right. And I think for now, we had only put this on the agenda for information purposes. Since certainly, and I, there's still some information flow going back and forth, because I know that our DPW director had some questions. So we're kind of in the middle of finding some information on that. But if there is something to authorize, we'll have Rich or someone, or myself, bring it back.
Again, I think authorization is kind of a strong word. I think they really just want to be invited. You know, again, legally, no doubt. I'm pretty sure they just want, you know, but they can't just take it upon themselves to do it at my request.
Right. No, I meant the, I meant more of the restoration.
Yeah.
And perhaps the source might also be.
To date, the stones that we have restored, we have done, we know that they haven't been maintained.
We have prepared permission as well.
And as far as the application for, I believe, what was the name of the organization? Or it was the cell?
They're going to pursue it and they're going to petition the federal government. That's, that's what that is.
Well, I know before signing off on that, our Sexton did have some questions, so.
Yeah. You guys are on that.
So we're definitely working on it.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Is it, is a flag? This is, I, it's almost embarrassing, small fear in me. If I find myself there anytime it's sunny, I'm like, oh, it's a nice day. Look where I am today. So you're looking for me to do that. Anyway, but truly, so we want to, first we want to say we appreciate you listening to us, first of all, understanding that we enjoy this, or even each one of these stories speak to us or goes to a back chapter or from the art history perspective to the small town story perspective. It's just incredible. And I'm a patient for this sometimes.
What's the names gone? This story goes with it. And that's really important to us. That is what drives this research, this story. And this Warren Brown just don't let it go. Wow, the story just continues, you know. And I'd need another half hour just to tell it to finish. But it's nothing, we didn't start, but anyway. It's awesome. Thank you. And thank you for showing us the networking. The buildings.
You're welcome.
I would like to thank the board for volunteering their times to do this for people that don't even know what a fair that they have for it. In Kentucky, annually, they would have something called Declaration Day where they went to the cemeteries and cleaned the stones and they cleaned up around the plots and the whole thing like this. It was, plenty of the day was warm, but you know, that was called Declaration Day or time. And that's, again, a lot of work from the Civil War. So it might be important to know that this, that, you know, everyone to know that the public is going to be welcome to join this. This isn't just the three of us. So, you know, there might be some issues. Again, it's all going to be under the direction of Mr. Hentor and I'm sure he's going to keep everybody safe. And Andy has us to help with this. So thank you for thanking us. And it is our passion, so.
So even to regular, you know, you go and they're confused, everything is new and important. And all of that, of course, all the information and research and we try to take that over to whoever's library, taking it. All of that.
Mr. Langdon has invited us many times to his war room, because the Civil War room is still open. Who knows what else to pick up?
Well, thanks again.
If anybody has any questions, how we clean, what to use, and. Enjoy this way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we've not finished this, this is our second reading.
Oh, that's mine.
Sorry.
I'm so excited to get up.
She's not.
She wanted to cut to line.
Consistent with council policy, this would not be read again unless one of the numbers wishes to be read it, which I'm always willing to do. So just leave, oh, any of this?
And this is, or also, this is in virtual, this is ordinance 21458, fire damages structure that we introduced in our last meeting. There were a couple of minor changes that you made since then, I think.
Correct.
Some timetables, so otherwise, I'll print it on the packet and we'll send it to the website as well. I don't have any discretion or questions to anyone, but everybody was against the last.
Second. Mayor Olivera? Councilwoman Huss?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
And Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Would you hear me?
It's up to new business. First up is water and sewer rates recommendations for fiscal year 2122, which is.
No, no, now means. Just save her money.
Seriously, are there versions of this?
There's birds.
As we started doing a number of years ago, we bring the water and sewer rate information to your council. At the same meeting, initial council, the initial budget is presented to them. And with that, with that budget process, these draft budget process is completed, we can take those numbers in and generate what our projected rate will be for water and sewer. I obtained last year, last fiscal year's water and sewer volumes from the utility office. This has been the standard practice in developing rates for the past few years. Sewer water, sewer volume bill is 482,406,000 gallons. Water volume is 49952,000 gallons. When we compare the volumes, we saw about a 4.3, 4.4% increase in our sewers and about 3.5% water. Those are increases in the sales. Then we started looking at our utility operation maintenance costs. Now, we presented this last year, and I think it was also the law, it's just the goal in the premier average to the five year average. So we did incorporate that five year average. It had, it honestly had minimal impact, because I looked at it both ways. But we went to the five year average for that. And our utility operation maintenance cost for the sewer utility wound up just another 10% percent. And our water operation maintenance cost wound up 2.58%. A lot of that is driven by the maintenance activities that we have determined in the war. Obviously, our labor, technical expenses, they're slightly, they're slightly, but money's committed towards maintenance and to achieve. The volumes increasing slightly, costs are maybe hastened or decreasing slightly. We need to increase rates to achieve funding level we operate here. So with minimal increases, with minimal increases for the upcoming season.
I can't understand. Not this in my parents.
By generating calculations, increase proposed water service volumes. For 2021, 2022, we're posing the rates of $6.65 for water, which is a 13 cent per thousand gallon increase, 1.99%. For sewer, we're looking at a rate of $6.76, which is a 17 cent per thousand gallon increase, 2.57%. Overall, we can see a 30 cent increase per thousand gallons, 2.28% increase. Post rates are showing above. The city would anticipate generating approximately $3.658 million dollars. Reinvestment in the system can improve. The slow roll we projected last fiscal year, and this needs to be pointed out, township paying the current rate, they pay us $4.26 for houses alone, and $3.75 for sewer. Revenues are projected as follows. And I have, basically, what it results in is that instead of the $3.658 million, we will only have $2.40, $2.403 million dollars available for capital infrastructure. It's about $1.25 million difference in volumes. And then, just as information purposes, the percentage use of water and sewer volumes, out of the 49952,000 gallon units, 56.33% of those are city customers' billings and 44.60% of the state charges. So we're considering 44.6% of the water that's produced. For sewer, it's about 59.53% of sewer are generated, treated, comes from city customers, 45.16% comes from township. You'll back up and you look at the percentage funding, this is a disparity that we see. We're using as example, we're using 24.6% of sewer or water, 45.96% of sewer. The funding that's generated, people who don't know this, what they're paying right now only brings in about 27.6%. So we're seeing, those are impacting our abilities due to capital. And it's a good example. Oliver is, if that was, Steve, 3.6, 3.9 million dollars, do that for the years, 2.9, okay, so put it on the screen for two years. So one big project basically consumes all of our revenue. And then on the last page, if the above rates are approved, the table of the annual budget would be as follows. And this is as it is in the current budget, and that would be updated with these new numbers. Just, this is a side, was showing at the builder, and she probably mentioned, just looking at, if, make up that 1.255 million, 2.255 million dollars difference there. If that was paid, we could drop your overall rates from $1.16 to 1,000 gallons for water at $1.30 for 1,000 gallons for sewer. Do all of this. Anyway, these are the rate calculations. Again, the rate for water would be $6.65 per thousand. Sewer would be $6.79 per thousand. It's 13.17 cent increase per thousand gallons respectively. And our total, little billion per thousand gallons of water to $15.
All right. Well, thank you, Rich. All the information you did to, all the gathering you're comfortable with those pieces, which are, I would say, less than what we've done.
Last year, I requested a 10% to figure, something significantly lasted that long. This is basically the track that we use to estimate.
Thank you, sir. We look forward to seeing that again.
Well, if council proves that we can incorporate.
You want to prove it.
What do you want to prove?
Then we separate.
But definitely, if you improve this council, and that way it gets incorporated into the final budget before it is presented.
Can you motion that? I would agree with this water sewer rate.
Councilwoman Huss?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Johnson? Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
And Mayor Olivera?
Let's look at this deliberate water and sewer count, Rich, as well.
In August of last year, the city participated in water assistance program with Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, which is families on assistance with water and sewer bills during the pandemic. Condition of this program was that the city could not shut water and sewer service off to a residential customer for 90 days following the receipt of those spots. This 90-day period has now passed. The city is facing a number of liquidity accounts. Excuse me. During that time, the governor also issued orders preventing the city's ability to terminate water and sewer services for unpaid balances during the COVID pandemic. This order has since expired. As of April 12, 2021, the city has 124 accounts which are dealing with 60 days or more, with only $27,780. Before recommencing shut-off notices to customers and initiating payment plans with them, staff wanted to make sure the council was aware that we were going to be re-implementing this collection. These liquidity accounts range from a few dollars to over $1,000. In some cases, the customer has made no payments. This is the governor, governor's orders, no revenue for a year now. With outstanding balances as significant as these are, the ability to make payments to catch up, they take a significant timeline. In the past, they do have Mike Wilensky on the phone, is virtually, if there's any questions, right? But right now, if somebody's delivering with, give them that three-month period until the next bill comes out, they can catch up. Now, with somebody with $1,000, it could be difficult. So we are looking at extending that time. I think that extension is going to be based on the situation. In discussing this with Sewer Stan, he indicated that as long as a customer In discussing this with Suez, Suez there, he indicated that as long as a customer comes in, stays current with an ongoing quarterly billings, develops a payment plan for the unpaid balance, will work with the customer to keep water service on. If the customer misses payments for the established payment plan or becomes delinquent on third bills, they will risk having their water supply shot off. Utility will enhance for many years for the customers who have a delinquent account and established those payment plans, which does work for both parts. However, the customer does need. In a lot of cases, the property ownership. It's, we have some that don't, and they, they're reminded of this from the door. They don't, one of the questions in the document, Rachel, is how many residents we get distributed in that subsidy program? I can't give you an answer. Person who took care of the county office is Hophan DeGrae. I asked Mike, Mike sent me a file, he can't open it, I can't open it, I said, Steve, Steve can't open it.
Steve can't open it.
We know there was a significant number that were, that we did receive funding for.
I was just curious. I was just curious.
And I think it was automatic, if they were, if they were receiving assistance from the state of Michigan, they ought to be automatically, I think it was up to, I think it was seven hundred dollars for water and sewer service. If you get fourteen hundred dollars. That did have. For some reason, I lost sales in seventies and early eights.
So, you know, you just make sure I understood correctly, and both parties understand it correctly, is that you're willing to work with anyone for email, not just within that ninety days, but set up a payment plan that would work for them, keep the water on for as long as it takes, but their obligations are, they have to contain, keep current in all the bills that are currently coming up new, plus maintain their payment program. I think that's very fair. And, you know, I'm glad that we're able to work with people with some of the bigger balances, you know, to not just say, well, it's got to be paid off within ninety days. We've always been.
And that's, I mean, realistically, somebody is paid for a year and is facing a thousand dollar account balance, there's no way. Can you realize that? If they come in, as long as they're reasonable, you can do a hundred dollars a month, you can do seventy-five dollars a month. As long as they stick to what they say they can do. At least appreciate it.
I don't have any issues with your stating of the current, for the past practice, I don't know if you're, if you're looking for it or not, and nobody has opposed to it, or you need to vote on that?
I, I just basically.
We didn't vote to do it first place years ago.
Well, I just want council to be aware, so if you start getting calls, that you are aware that this was going to start up, you hadn't been doing it, and because of the governor's orders, and this program that we just been, like, that kind of stuff. So if you get a call, why didn't you shut it down? That is, that payment, in addition to the quarterly bill that's supposed to be out of that, they would, you know, let's just say that they have a five hundred dollar bill. In addition to paying the quarterly bills, and if you come in and say, I could pay a hundred dollars a month, catch that up. So every month, for five months, you would use a hundred dollars. Yeah. I've never liked the quarterly bills, that's why I'm sitting in my check here every month to go.
Yeah, without a, so another radio.
He said that like, I have a big bill, but.
Yeah, there's a part I had that says, open the hearing, or two one one, is peaceful, civil, believe, and art programs, independent of anything, but in large situations, there are problems, nothing, problem. For water, so it's the resource that will be jumped to.
Awesome, thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
That's up with the new swan manager program, the Wildland Sanctuary.
And I believe we have Mr. Arzno on the computer, all right, to answer questions with me. So I was contacted on April twenty-third by a local USDA wildlife specialist requesting permission to proceed with the egg oiling program for mute swans. And this was with a corn-based oil product, and that's within the Alpena Wildlife Sanctuary. And this was the first type of request that we received like that, so I wanted to get a little more information. So I spoke with Mr. Arzno, and I hope I'm saying your name correctly. He is a wildlife biologist with the USDA Wildlife Services Program in Michigan. Mr. Arzno provided the attached document, which was in the council packet, From Beauty to Beast: Managing Mute Swans in Michigan to Protect Native Resources. This document provides justification and scientific support regarding the problems caused by overabundant mute swans. This, you can also find additional information on the DNR website, I've provided the link. This program is also at no cost to the city, and the removal is performed by USDA personnel. And this is all on behalf of the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. And it's also my understanding that the AWS Alpena Wildlife Sanctuary Board is supportive of this management method within the Wildlife Sanctuary in the window for egg oiling is two weeks, which we began on April twenty-third, so time is limited. And this is, so basically, it's my recommendation that the municipal council approve the attached resolution, authorizing me to sign all documents necessary for permission for the USDA to perform mute swan nest and egg destruction, and this is for a five-year. Um, Mr. Arzno, did you have anything to add?
No, that was, that was a great summary, I appreciate you doing that. And just maybe sort of a big picture perspective, we've been doing this work now for about twenty years throughout the state, and we've actually been quite successful largely through making, you know, establishing partnerships with townships and city councils and, you know, lake associations on private lakes, so we've been doing this work a long time. And when we noticed that there's an expansion and, you know, mute swan nests or more birds in a certain area, we try and reach out to those entities and, and get permission, so that was, that was why I reached out to you. And one other thing that's important to note, too, in Alpena, you have, so we have multiple swan species in Michigan. You have who promote the state threatened trumpeter swans, so those are ones with the black bills. It's great that you guys actually have a decent population of those to, to protect. So, so with that, you know, we tried to reduce the mute swan numbers so that we can encourage the trumpeter swans and allow them to do better. So with that, yeah, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, and I appreciate you taking the time to, to review this today.
Thank you, sir. And I appreciate all the information that was provided. I approve resolution twenty-one dash one zero.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walabura?
Yeah.
And Councilwoman Huss?
Thank you. Next up is the use policy for a city of Alpena-owned or controlled properties.
Thank you. So I have observed over the, the past year or so, our review process and worked with staff to revise the policy that you have in front of you. And just to make it the process more practical and functional, for your reference and anyone else, the existing park use policy is on our website, I provided the link there. City staff are proposing a revised fee schedule, including a twenty-five dollar application fee and fees for requested street closures, et cetera, that require DPW or law enforcement support. These fees will help support future park maintenance. Please note that there are circumstances in which the fees will be waived for the proposed policy. Below are the number of events that were approved over the past three years. Obviously, we had a little bit of difference in twenty twenty with COVID. And there may be additional events that were viewed or things that, excuse me, but not approved that are not included in the numbers. If approved, city staff will develop one application form to reflect the revised policy. And we would anticipate that this policy could take effect October first. We want to give a little bit of time to, you know, let event organizers know that this new policy and the new fees will be in place on October first. It is our intent to look into options as well for an online form and payment system. And so it is my recommendation to the Alpena Municipal Council to approve the use policy for city of Alpena-owned or controlled properties.
I am. I want more time to, I went over this, I read it, it's, just quite frankly, I apologize, it was probably one of the last things on my list to do, but I did, I didn't go over it. I wanted to look a little bit more, I guess, into the extra fee for KPW police, it just, I guess it just kind of depends on, on how much that, how much that is for, so I'm assuming that some are more than others, like the brown trout uses their own security, but usually when we close second, we don't. But you see a presence down there, but those are obvious, or certain others, they're extra.
Chief, could you explain maybe an example of when that might be, go above and beyond what you would want to do?
Well, the brown trout, we used to have patrols down there, but they, they started to gain to their own security. Alpena, probably the events, and I don't know if it's really relevant to parks right now. We do have several events that law enforcement are requested to be there with the traffic, if they run into, and it does not take any amount of time to run into several hundreds of dollars for ulcers to be there, especially if you get into overtime. And then we also have mandatory three hour call-ins, so ulcers get paid for three hours, even if they're only there for a stay and hour and a half or two, so it is not too long to start running up some serious dollars. The events that come to mind are, are not so much really park related right now. I'm thinking of, let's see, example, Rainbow Rides, which we recently received an application for that, especially that. And for that, I have to hold my afternoon cruise over, and I have to bring my, my midnight cruise in early. And it's this event that's really not sponsored per se by the city. But we wind up having expenses as a result of that. But I, and again, just, you know, thinking of your call, I'm, we run into this all the time, we, people say, can please be there? We feel like we have an obligation to be there, but it takes time and money.
I think we could even work with event organizers maybe to, you know, make some changes and give, if they do want to run it as they normally did, you know, what's that going to cost in addition? And then as far as DPW, I know that there are barricades for street closures and such, but Rich could probably give a few more examples.
Yeah. Just a request for a block park, you know, we have to put a road close, sign each end, and it's two people go out there, one of them, they go to close sets up, also one time dump truck. Take it outside, once over, you have to pick it up. You know, downtown, we put out barrels and barricades, and we have car signs wherever the clothes suck it out, emptying out. The white fast, blue's fast. Summary sucks. And those, we had to think significantly, a lot of barricades out there, dropping them up. And then have to pick them up. It's, truck is thirty dollars an hour. Labor is, you probably look at it at thirty-five dollars an hour on average, including all benefits and that. So you can write a couple of different, you know, and we want, we weren't so much as last year. Chiefs are, we were just on a religion. Take barricades off, we get very time consuming.
And we definitely want to support these events and, and even bring new events to Alpena, but there is a, you know, a cost incurred, and, you know, with fewer revenue sources, we, you know, would like to at least recoup what it costs us to, you know, go out and labor any of those things out.
And I did that. And the application fee, I'm not really super supportive of the twenty-five dollar application fee. And that kind of goes for any, the applications.
Right, and what, there are some examples. So, and I had talked with Amber earlier, and I had missed a word, if you go to fees and deposits under a fee, where it says an application fee, so required for all applications to the city for an event that requires administrative, I would add review and or council approval, because it does take some additional staff time to go through that review and to prepare it for council. And I did receive a lot of great comments from the clerk staff on, you know, coming up with some other language in there, so. That was good.
My, sorry, I was, you know, some, some people were trying to just go all up and down. We're revising, and they get permission to do so, but it doesn't require any review, full, you know, permission. So I, in that case, for example, they might be, wouldn't have to go through a series of reviews. Or if we end up having, you know, the staff still has to, so, doing that application, even if it isn't from us, we have to send the waters to, 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 to tell them what they have to do. Or you're, it takes a year, they have to, I'm in the post.
You know, we tried to make consideration, and especially after I saw, talked to some of the clerk staff, you know, as far as if it's just a rental at, you know, a pavilion or, or the basketball courts, then that's kind of something that we need to collect an application fee for, because that's, you know, something you would generally do. But as far as needing to send this through administrative review, there's a lot of back and forth. You may need to prepare for, for the packet, and, and, you know, one of those is, is not a lot, but when you're thinking of sixty per year or perhaps more, it adds up.
Hey, I do want to point out that assessing the twenty-five dollar application fee is going to be a little bit more cumbersome on my staff, because they have to, say, somebody comes in, brings in their event application, somebody has to make the determination right then and there if that fee needs to be assessed. If I'm not there, Rachel's not there, not really sure how to handle that yet. We are also looking into automating it by putting it online, and maybe as the applicant goes through and checks boxes, it could somehow, I don't know.
Leave them, leave them to the right resolve. Right, so, so we wanted to, that's why the October first, and that was also some great feedback from staff, is that, you know, we need time to implement this, we need time to let everyone know and find a system that's going to work.
It's good, sir, when you do something like this, you know, typically, it's best to have. I don't like having a lot of things that are gray, you know, I'd rather have it be, be black and white for staff and something like that, rather than saying, you know. you know, having staff determine, you know, well, it's a bunch of guys want to put in a term in our festival quarter, but we ran out of tents courts and we have a tents tournament, we charge for that, and we don't. And look at that. The other thing I want to look at a little bit, too, and maybe postponing this, I'm going to use the correct term, and I is maybe, uh, I want to make sure that we're not creating a twenty five dollar payment. You know, it's going to be more cumbersome for you guys to review and collect and send money in like that. You know, is the fee going to actually, you know, cover the cost or are we creating additional new costs? You know, it's definite to cover it. You know, we're looking for the, you know, the current costs that we have, law enforcement to DPW, you know, understand what it is to get those closures up there and so on. But, you know, we do have citizens of the city also paying taxes for use of those bucks and so on. So that has to be considered as well. Um, if Mr. Mayor is, if you sit in, postponing, we're looking into this a little bit more, I would be.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, I think, I think it's a good, it's great, yeah, correct, it's, it's a good start. Yeah, we just like a little bit more time there.
We don't really have a lot of time because this needs to go into the budget. The fees.
Those money at least that to like.
Yeah.
I think that would be enough, so.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't. When I looked over the fee schedule at the bottom, like, you know, for kind of start showing some five dollar to eight dollar, some of these changes at the bottom, I didn't really, didn't really see too much of an issue. Oh, and then there were, yeah, there were these sorts of.
I think the city hall parking lot's a new one?
Yeah, it looks like, because they're all in red, it looks like the junk part, the trailhead. The marina. And then the western street closure, additional fees, city hall parking lots. She kids' home, parking shelter all changed. They're all additional.
Well, those are, those are additional.
Oh, okay.
But again, there are, um, in, in the fee section, you know, there, there is some room to waive those fees for certain events.
What we have in here is is that, does that align with what?
We're proposing, well, that's an increase. Um, but there is an increase built into the lease market.
It, it used to be, in two thousand and eleven, before we released rate was a hundred and twenty five dollars for today, Joe Redd. She was from Chelmsford, deposit. So it's been a number of years since that it's been, or it's even been a bill charged. So we put that in at a hundred and seventy five. When JD came in to get some keys over this week, he says, what's the rate? And we had this hundred and seventy five bucks because they agreed to rent it in case we couldn't, we didn't walk it.
And these fees that are marked as bills, bill or cost incurred, what, what you're expecting to do, I guess, both of you guys is, is have the explanation of what the, what the event is going to be, and just to give them a general idea so they can know whether they'll be able to project that on a yield bill that they're.
And then, you know, for the events that are approved this year, I think, and I haven't talked to Anna about this yet, um, but put something into the letter that says that, you know, these changes are potentially coming based upon whatever is approved, along with the new fee schedule October one.
One last question that came to mind on this, too, is I understand, okay, as the region leader for cities, so it's hard to compare to the other cities, but, you know, what other cities, similar sizes? This is something reconvened, reputation fees, I believe it is, from what I've seen.
I haven't done an analysis of surrounding communities, but when Anna was Googling, um, we found a few that had the application fees. Then I'm sure I could provide additional information.
Sure.
I have a question about things. Beginning of those, do we apply to our budget, when it makes sense for the community that means the lease is involved, it's likely to go to that.
Good, we talked about that as well, you know, what line it would go into. But, I mean, basically, this comes from the parks maintenance would come from the general fund anyway, as well as a lot of these, the administrative time that, that it would take, so. If you guys would just pack it into park maintenance, maintenance, but. And we can talk a little bit more about them.
It gets kind of difficult to split a fee up into multiple departments.
Again, that helps create a twenty five dollar payment.
Yeah, right, right.
I'm sure your backs are very confusing, so.
And I would, I would move that we postpone.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walavora? Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Johnson?
Thank you all for that. Get on our regular agenda. Okay, I move we return to closed session to discuss water sewer litigation and update proposal litigation with Alpena Bio. Starting, Alpena Prototype Bio LLC, American Process Incorporated, and Grand Bio.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walavora? Councilwoman Hess? Mayor Proton Johnson? Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
And as usual, for our virtual guests, I do not expect that we will take any action when we return to regular session. We will just be adjourning for a minute, but if you'd like to stick around, you can do so. But again, we won't be taking any other mini actions. I see you're adjourning. I move we adjourn.
Thank you.